Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The purpose of this meeting tonight is the second reading of the RSU-1 budget. Unfortunately, Robin and Kyle could not make it, and I had not heard from Bill, but we do have a quorum present. Thank you all for coming. I wish we had a few more folks in the seats tonight. Glad to see there were a few folks in the stands as I drove by McManfield. Hopefully, this won't be as exciting as probably some of those games will be. I do have, we'll move on to, I need to make an adjustment to the agenda. And I'll have that be under 3.2. I just want to address with the Board something I have received in the mail. Did you have any adjustments, Patrick?
No.
Okay, then we will move on to item 3.0, Personnel Item. I guess we have two.
Yeah, first, I'm just pleased to be able to nominate Kerry Babcock to you as the new principal of Fisher Mitchell School. Kerry's been with us at Phippsburg for four years, and before that, I think it was 13 or 14 years at Woolwich as a classroom teacher. We had 36 applicants for the position, and we interviewed eight people, and Judy Harvey, her Assistant Superintendent, led the search. So we're very pleased to nominate Kerry to you tonight for your, hopefully, for your approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Show my own.
Seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? The opportunity of bumping into Kerry over the weekend, congratulations again. No further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. None opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you.
The next item is Applied Academic Teacher at BRCTC. And what I really would like your approval with tonight, and to see if you have any questions about, is actually authorizing the position. Right now, it's a 60 percent, three days a week. It would be to authorize it to go to a 1.0 position. And this, it's really an educational need for our students at the high school level, for students at BRCTC, but also students at Morris High School. We do not have a lot of resources in the area of response to intervention and academic support, especially at the secondary level. So I, budgetary-wise, I believe we can afford this with shifting up some staff. And so for the '13-'14 year, I'd like to be able to open that and give people the opportunity, knowing ahead of time that it's going to be a 1.0.
Okay, is this an action item?
I need to authorize it. It's 60 percent right now, and I'd like to be able to, you know, to advertise it as a 1.0, because it has a budgetary impact.
Is there a motion?
I am.
And your motion is to?
Increase the Applied Academic Teacher's time from 60 percent to 100 percent, or 0.6 to 1.0.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? So Patrick, you've indicated that this essentially will have no effect to next year's budget.
I mean, it will have an impact, but again, because of some of the shifting and not filling some positions, we believe we can be able to do that. And we have a person that's in there, 60 percent, that's announced her retirement this year.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. None opposed? Okay, that motion passes. All right, I want to just address an issue with the Board. I guess we'll call this item 3.2. And I wasn't sure how to tackle this, but I thought it should be addressed. So bear with me. I received in the mail a couple of days ago a petition, and I'll read it to you. It says, "We, the varsity coaching staff at Morris High School, have signed his," and I think they mean "this," petition asking that the RSU-1 Board of Directors to honor the committee work of the Schedule B Committee in regards to language surrounding longevity for coaches and postseason pay. The following people have signed this. Jason Darling, football; Steve Boyce, girls soccer; Andy Knox, boys soccer; John Stanton, field hockey; Dane Dwyer, cross-country; Mike Rice, cross-country; Chris Marco, golf; Heidi Howe, cheering; Sean Guest, wrestling; Sam Hayes, boys basketball; Becky Roque, girls basketball; Todd Marco, swimming; Jamie Lamont, cheering; Sean Guest, girls track; Mike Rice, boys track; Garrett Olson, baseball; Will Laffley, softball; Steve Boyce, boys tennis; Barbara Boyce, girls tennis; Jay Paulus, boys lax or lacrosse; Linda Levesque, girls lax or lacrosse. So I felt that it was important to address this with the Board. But when I received it, frankly, the letter, or the petition bothered me on a lot of levels. And I'm not sure where to begin, but I do want to address three concerns that I have with this petition. And if somehow I've-
Before you do that, could you, at least, I'm not sure what the issue is.
Yep.
Is that part of what you're going to?
Yeah, I'll explain to you the issue, I'll explain the history.
Okay.
If I've somehow misinterpreted this, or the meaning of the petition, you know, I apologize. But that brings my first concern. This petition was sent to me, I never received any, I don't know, have any other Board members been contacted on this? We never received an email, a phone call, and any sort of outreach about having a discussion about this issue. I don't know who's behind this, I don't know who initiated it, and I think even the language isn't real clear on what these folks are asking. If I were to interpret this, and that's where I'll sort of address the history of A couple of years ago, the Board had asked, prior to going into contract negotiations, we had had a subcommittee formed of staff members and the Assistant Superintendent. And we asked them to look at Schedule B positions. We had heard that Schedule B, which basically constitutes coaching positions, other stipended positions within the district, so department heads, things like yearbook, that sort of thing, for clarification on what Schedule B is. That we were spending a lot of money in the district on Schedule B, and maybe we needed to take a look at, maybe there were some redundant positions or positions that we could cut. When we got the recommendation back from the Subcommittee on Schedule B, what we saw was sort of a realignment of positions. A few had been eliminated, but ultimately, the cost to the district was an increase over what we had seen previously. At that time, the Board decided to put a freeze on, we appreciated the work that the committee had done, and we asked to put a freeze, though, for that particular budget year, since we were already in the midst of budget discussions. We put a freeze on current level spending for Schedule B, and we would revisit Schedule B during contract negotiations. When we went into contract negotiations, and again, we tried to acknowledge some of the work, or all of the work, that this Subcommittee had done, we essentially approved, across the Board, the increases that the Subcommittee wanted, which total between athletic and non-athletic, total around $247,000. It was a $17,000 increase over what we had been spending prior. And for athletic positions, it was nearly an 8 percent increase overall. One of the things that had come out of that Subcommittee's work is they had requested that staff get paid additional funds if teams went on to playoffs. So if a team went further into the season, that there would be additional money there for them to receive for the playoffs. Also, the request was that senior coaches, and I think it was geared specifically towards varsity sports, would receive some sort of longevity pay. That they had served for a number of years, they would receive an additional stipend or an additional dollar figure on top of their stipend for longevity pay. The Board addressed that. Those topics came up in negotiation, and although we approved of the increases to the pay, or the base pay, the Board did not support the longevity pay or the postseason pay. That was addressed in negotiations, and that was part of the negotiation with the union. So the second thing that sort of bothered me with this petition is, this is an issue that was addressed. Some of you on the Board may not be aware of it, because you weren't on the Board, but I think I've kind of brought you up to speed. And then the third thing that bothered me was, in light of the budget that we're about to present to the public, there seems to be a disconnect. And I asked myself the question, the folks who signed this petition, where did they suspect these dollars were going to come from? Because they come from one of two sources. They either come from the taxpayers, or they come from adjustments within the programming that we currently offer. And as much as, you know, as much as I support the work that our coaches do, and I don't really feel like getting into a discussion about what they get paid relative to the amount of work they do, I just felt that the timing on this was poor, the lack of communication was poor, and I'm not sure exactly what they were looking for. But I felt it wouldn't have been appropriate for me to disregard this, that I needed to bring it before the Board, and this was the next Board meeting. So I sort of brought it to your attention. I didn't know if you had any comments or questions about how we should proceed with this.
Wouldn't these be issues that might be better addressed in contract negotiations? That's where they originally lay, I believe.
For certain, yeah. Anything that has to do with the stipend would fall. We would, and again, don't hold me to this, but it's my understanding that we would have, potentially have to reopen the contract, because we had already negotiated Schedule B, and these would be changes to Schedule B. Now, it may not be as involved as that, but again, the timing of this just, it didn't ring true to me.
Well, but I agree with your, you know, Dave's comment. I mean, these are, these are items that were raised during negotiation, and they seem, it seems appropriate to discuss them in the context of the next negotiation. And I'm not, I'm not sure why we would choose to reopen a discussion or a contract in, you know, to deal with this issue.
Any other discussion on this?
Coach. You talk about being blindsided. I've tried to stay on top of athletics, as Patrick knows, and I've met several times with Scott Walker, and talked about the program, the needs of the program and so forth. This is really being blindsided. Now, I didn't know the history of it, but in 30 years of athletic administration in another venue, I have never heard of people receiving additional compensation for championship play. Maybe I've been blind to it, but it certainly didn't occur in any of the systems that I was associated with. And longevity, you set up a scale, and you work within that scale, and if somebody approaches the maximum on that scale, and then the next contract negotiation, you can look within the contract to increase that pay scale. But I just don't see it happening here, at this point in time. I mean, we've agonized over this budget, it's still a work in progress, and for us to be talking about athletic stipends, it's just inappropriate. It belongs in another place at another time.
I would ask that we will have a public comment session. If anyone, if there's any clarification, if I've misinterpreted this in some way, I would hope that I would get some clarification from someone in the public on this. And also, I would encourage that anyone who is involved in this to reach out to the Board, either through a phone call, or sit down over a cup of coffee, or worst-case scenario, an email, but to discuss what the intention is here. So, all right. Enough said on that for now. We will move on to item 4.0, First Reading of Board Policies. Again, these are not action items. These policies were handed out at the end of last Board meeting. I'll go through them quickly. Just need to find mine. And if there are any questions from the Board, we can address them. We'll begin with item 4.1, Policy EEBB, RSU-1 Use of Private Vehicles on School Business. Any questions, comments about this? Okay, again, this is not an action item, but we will be voting on it on the next Board meeting. Okay, we'll move on to item 4.2, Policy KDB, Public's Right to Know, Freedom of Access. Questions, comments, discussion about this? I had two. This was a policy that we just adopted a little over a year ago. What prompted revisiting it?
Maine School Management's recommendation. There was a few changes. I'm not sure exactly which ones off the look back, but we get a list from Drummond Woods and Man, Maine School Management, saying which ones we need to revisit.
Okay. One of the odd ones in here is, a year ago, we were charging a fee of 50 cents per page to cover the cost of copying. That was reduced to 25 cents. Just curious what the motivation there was.
I mean, it was a-
It seemed a little punitive, at 50 cents a page.
All right. It's just, again, it's interesting that we just looked at this less than a year ago. Okay, we'll move on. Item 4.3, Policy JKD, Suspension of Students. Any questions, comments? You see, there was one particular line of change in there. Was that something that prompted because of something that had happened in the district, or because of language that we received from Drummond Woods?
I think it was legal advice, wasn't it?
Yeah, language we received. Okay. All right, and then Policy JKE and JKE-R, Expulsion of Student Guidelines.
And that was a combination of both. We experienced that last year, and also, it's been changed in the law, so that's why it came before you.
Okay. All right, we will be voting on these at the next meeting. Okay, we will move on to item 5.0, Second Reading and Approval of Fiscal Year '14 School Budget. And this will be an action item. I will turn it over to you, Patrick. I'd just like to get a sense from folks that are here tonight. Is there anyone here who has not attended one of the prior budget meetings? Because we can go through and give a history of what's gone on with the budget. Okay, all right. I'll turn it over to you, Patrick.
I guess I can wing this a little bit, is I don't have everything in front of me. But this year, we came in with a different philosophy. I'll go fairly quick through this. But the Board gave the administrative team direction that with our nonlabor, we wanted to ask for what we needed, kind of going back to a zero-based budgeting and building our budget that way, and not giving the direction that a lot of school systems give, where we don't want to exceed a certain percentage overall of our budget. So we really looked at our needs. Then the administrative team with the Board, way back in the fall, came together and looked at priorities of the district as far as resources, staffing, and came up with a three-year plan of the priorities we need in this system to increase the educational quality in the system. So that's the process we used. Our first draft came in around a 9.7 percent increase, and then we went back and we reduced by, I don't know, it was $650,000, $700,000, and brought it down to in the 6 percent range. And that, it's been in the 6 percent range, the increase over the operating budget for the last couple of months. And it did go from like a 6.3 to a 6.6, and again, that was a little bit of loss in state subsidy, as well as increase in health benefits. So that's been the process all along. There are some things in a 1 point, in the 1.7 that is being proposed, 1.7 million increase, is salary and benefits, main care, and also, the proposal that we've been advised to keep in the budget for assuming a certain share of the teacher retirement. Those are really the three, I guess I would say, big items. Some other items, too, but those are the three big ones that make up that 1.7. And then we do have some new positions in this budget, again, 6.6 percent increase, again, which varies amongst the towns as far as the contributions that they have to make with the new cost sharing. But in this budget, right now, we have a Special Education Life Skills Program that will begin, mostly focused on grades six through eight, and we're starting small. Some special ed support, ed techs at a couple of our schools, a maintenance person district-wide, a school resource officer that is primarily at Morris, but also could be used anywhere in the system, and especially at our middle school levels. Pre-K increase of 13 slots, and also, a site at Phippsburg. Woolwich grade five teacher because of enrollment, West Bath kindergarten teacher because of enrollment, and then a health educator at BMS and at Woolwich. And the last two or three positions, Woolwich, West Bath, and the health teacher, did not increase the bottom line. One thing that we have done is the enrollment at Phippsburg, and kindergarten was five students, and so we shifted some staff around from Phippsburg to one of our other schools when we had an opening in retirement. And we're still in the process of possibly not filling positions or reshifting staff around, so we believe we can afford these positions with that 6.6 percent increase.
Okay, at the last budget discussion, I recall that there were three items that either there had been questions from the public or from the Board. Didn't know if we could address these. I know some of the information we've received via email, but it would be helpful for the public. The first was the question of consolidating the Athletic Director position into a single position. Could you just reiterate essentially what you sent us in the email?
This question comes up, I think, in a fair amount of districts in Maine, because of the size of our schools. I just, the Board asked this question, they've asked it more than once of me, and I just offered my opinion via email to the Board. And, you know, this system has some work to do when it comes to athletic administration, six through 12, as far as making sure that we're on the same page philosophically, making sure that we're working together, and maybe a little bit more of a cohesive manner, because we are unique, that we have two middle schools, and we have one high school in the system. And our one middle school is fairly good size and offers a lot of athletic or interscholastic opportunities, and the other one doesn't have as much. And we have students from Woolwich that do participate in the interscholastic program at BMS. You know, my concern is that if we consolidate and just have one Athletic Director for six through 12, that budgetarily, it will not save us any money. But even bigger than that is that having an Athletic Director in our schools is a frontline person that can deal with eligibility, academic, drug and alcohol, any of those issues, can encourage students, get to know them if they're a teacher in that building, and especially at the middle school level, really encourage students to try a sport or an activity that they may never have, their parents may not urge them to try. I think the relationships and connections that those Athletic Directors can make with students is very important. So I think, you know, I don't want to reiterate everything I put in the letter, but, you know, I think I've had some conversation with some of you through email, and as a system, I think we have some work to do in that area, and maybe restructuring them a little bit for future years. But as far as just removing two of them from the budget would not be my recommendation at this point.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from the Board on that item? I mean, I'll just say, you know, I appreciate the efforts of the Board to try and dig up anything we can find, especially in these budgetary times, but based on the feedback that we got from Patrick, I think that any financial gain we might see would be minimal, and I think it's best for us to keep things status quo. I think there's some real benefits to that, to that current structure. Any other comments or questions for Patrick on that?
I do think that, as we set Board goals, and you often give me direction on what you'd like for presentations each month, that that may not be a bad one for next year, for us to come back and kind of give you an update or review of some of the things that we've done to try to, six through 12, make that a little bit more cohesive.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the Board on that item? All right, we'll move on to, we had a member of the public had questions about our choice of device for the high school level. I know- I know that, it's my understanding in the current budget, we're looking at iPads, and there was a question about that versus another device. Did you want to address that, or maybe Dean would address that?
Yeah, I know Dean followed up with a person that came last time to the meeting to answer his questions, but I think it would be important for Dean. I know we sent you some backup information as far as what the governor's choice was for one-to-one device, but also I think we explained the flexibility that we have as a system. So Dean's here tonight, can briefly speak to you about why we're looking at going in the direction of staying with Apple, I guess I would say.
Okay, and Dean Emerson is our technology director.
Thanks. Okay. I thought it would be helpful, I realize that everybody wants to hear about, you know, the device very specifically to MLTI, but I think that we also have to just step back for a moment and think about, the technology budget has to address all of our needs K through 12. And we really came into this budget year needing to address the fact that our K6 technologies have really fallen into some disrepair over the years. We were using antiquated equipment in those schools, nine-year-olds, old iBooks, and that sort of thing. And so when we crafted this budget and when we looked at the devices, it was also within the framework that we needed to be able to afford to cover all of the technology needs, at least in a first step for this next phase. So what the technology budget provides for us is new labs in our elementary schools, grades K through 6, which will aid, which will address the aging technologies we have there. And then some additional technologies such as iPads, document cameras and things like that, that will work with staff to find out exactly where they think their needs are on some of those peripheral-type devices. Okay? Now, when we looked at the MLTI award, okay, the governor selected the HP Notebook, which was a fine device. But the review team that really looked at it, and was made up of people from three different states, six people, scored the Apple primary, what's called the Apple Primary Solution, the highest, by a lot. I mean, it got the equivalent of an A, which was by far the highest score of any of the five qualifying proposals. It also happened to be the least expensive option. What that proposal provides to our staff would be a MacBook Air computer, as well as an iPad Mini for grades 7 through 12. And then for students, they would get the full-size iPad Retina. But the device is really not necessarily where we want to place our emphasis. I mean, it's really not a complete solution. The Apple product not only included those devices, but it also has the most number of people who are in professional development located right here in the state. So their PD plan, I think, is going to be very good. Four-year warranty, buffer replacement, a terrific suite of applications specifically geared for education. The applications on the iPad transform the device. I know that there's really lingering from the iPad 1 generation, this, the popular buzzwords, where they're great content delivery, they're good for consuming data, but you can't generate information with them, you can't create. And I won't even argue that, the iPad 1 didn't have a, you know, didn't have a lot of features. But that's no longer the case, and the apps really transform that device. And I think what gets me more excited about the iPad solution is the ease of use and the kinesthetic touch interface. Because what happens is, it's so simple to use that I think we'll see greater technology integration throughout all grades. I think that now, our staff work very, very hard, they attend all the PD they can, and they've been working to use the technology they've been given. But there's no question that the technology is sometimes an inhibitor in terms of, how do I use it, when would I use it, and getting them sufficient training within the confines of the time that they have available. The iPad is very, very easy to use, and the apps are terrifically well-designed. So I think that we'll actually see people adopt technologies more quickly.
Are there any questions for Dean on this issue?
Just go ahead, see, cost-wise, you know, in terms of the cost?
Yeah.
The governor's proposal is, he'll provide a certain dollar amount regardless of the district's choice of machine.
Yeah.
How does that break?
Yeah, the MLTI suggested solution from HP is basically $254 per unit, and the Apple is $217 per unit. So the $37, we would have to, as an example, you know, in grades 7 and 8, that would be covered, because that's what the state budget is geared towards. If we wanted to go with an HP, we would have to fund at our high school 620 seats at an additional $37 per unit, or roughly another $22,000 per year. And I'm not really sure that we would even want to do that, because quite honestly, moving from the MacBooks that our staff currently have to a MacBook Air will be a wonderful transition. The MacBook Air is a great device. And all of the work that they've been designing over the last several years, they can continue to use. But the Apple iPad also comes with all these other solutions, like something called e-Backpack, which is an electronic submission tool for students geared for education, so that a teacher can take that work they've already been doing, place it in, it's basically a cloud storage. Students can go there, pull down the assignment, complete the assignment, submit it electronically. Teachers can then go to that e-Backpack webpage, and they can pull down the submissions, annotate on them, send them back to the students. It includes file storage, cloud backup, 15 gigabytes of space. It includes some accessories that really make the device interesting as well, because what allows, for every 15 student seats, you get an Apple TV, okay, which is not an actual television, it's the little box that connects with an HDMI cable to your television or to your projector. And what that's going to allow people to do in a classroom is to wirelessly connect to the projector in that room, not just teachers, but students. So instead of going through class, and as an example, students having to email a document to a teacher, and then the teacher loading each one of the documents and doing it all through their laptop, or the teacher saying, "Okay, Dean, bring up your laptop," and waiting while everybody's plugging in their cables, they'll just click a couple of buttons right on the screen, and their information will appear up on the projector. So, and it also allows a teacher to wander around the room with their iPad or their MacBook, what they call untethered environment. So there are a lot of features, quite honestly, I haven't even covered half of them, that make it a really solid solution for us.
Seeing technology people get excited is scary. I'd just be concerned if we didn't, if we went with the HP product, that we would find ourselves adjusting, you know, stealing those, that extra $22,000 out of the technology budget from some other part of the technology budget. And we'd see some of the infrastructure and the improvements to the K through, you know, the K through 6 element being, I won't say weight, being eliminated, but certainly being, you know, pushed off in terms of priorities.
Sure.
I think what you're describing is, well, not only that, but it's a system and device, or the Apple, you know, the Apple world is one that staff and students are somewhat familiar with at this point. So to switch to HP, you're really changing, you're changing, making a dramatic change in terms of need to train staff and get students used to a different kind of networking.
I think you're right. I think we've spent a lot of time developing skills and resources, and while it's nice to talk about being platform-independent, not everybody makes that leap easily.
I think, I mean, I would, I would think that the recommendation to go with Apple would probably go.
So again, but at the high school level, where with the one-to-one device, we're looking at iPad versus MacBook, what is the length of that contract that we're?
They're four years.
Okay. And I know that there were some questions about the iPad versus the MacBook in terms of durability. Should we have any concerns about that?
The schools that are using iPads in a one-to-one deployment are actually seeing far less breakage. It's all solid-state, the hard drives are solid-state, there's no hinge on the display. I really, honestly, I think it's going to be a significantly more robust device than the plastic MacBooks we have now.
And then, again, to address things at the high school level, in terms of creation of materials, creation of documents, you feel that because of the apps that are available with an iPad, that the iPad will work as well as the MacBook option?
I think that they're very different, and I think that we need to be careful that we don't simply try to do everything we've done. If we just take that approach where we're going to do it exactly, you know, we're going to use everything exactly the same and just try to port it to this new thing, we're going to be frustrated. We're going to have to be able to take a look at using all the components that we can and looking at what adjustments do we need to make. I mean, it won't do everything the same way that a MacBook does, but the MacBook won't do a lot of things that it will do. And so I think we need to be open-minded about looking at the merits of the device and the solution, and what it can do. And what I am confident in is that it can perform the tasks that we need. And I think that there'll be some things we need to supplement other technologies around. As an example, in science, they use Vernier probes. Okay, well, the app for the iPad from Vernier isn't very good. It's in development still. So what we'll do is we'll take some of the older MacBooks, we'll buy them at a very reasonable price, and we'll supplement those in the classrooms. We'll put, you know, half a dozen in every room, so that they can collect the data from the Vernier probes with the MacBooks, put it in Dropbox or some other cloud-based service. And the students will just pull the data down from that onto their iPads, and then perform the lab work that they needed. The key to them is being able to sit down with the staff, talk about what exactly they do and what they need, and then putting workflows in place to help them continue to get that done, or to look at where we can enhance it.
Okay. And just to revisit this one more time, what is the cost for the four-year contract at the high school level with the one-to-one? Do you recall what that was?
Not off the top of my head. It's 217 devices, excuse me, $217 per device, times roughly 620 devices. So, and that gives you your annual cost.
That's our, okay.
Yeah, and you pay that four times.
Any other questions for Dean? Okay, thanks for addressing that.
Thank you.
All right, and then the third item that came up at the last budget, or at the last board meeting, was the ed tech piece. I know there's been some shifting around within the budget that was presented, there's a necessity within the district. Steve, because you weren't here to create a life skills program, so we're looking at reducing a couple of ed tech positions that had been in the prior budget, I'd just like to have a sense of ultimately, you know, what schools are going to be affected by that loss of ed techs, and do those administrators feel comfortable with that as we look to approving the budget? So would you address that, Patrick?
I'd let Sharon Brown come on up and try her best to address that.
Sharon is our special ed director.
There is going to be a new requirement for board meetings now. Any administrators who come have to wear quacky shoes, just like mine.
I thought it had something to do with lowering the microphone.
Oh, well, maybe that's it. So, Tim, you had a question about reallocating a couple of those ed tech positions into the life skills teaching position, and being able to begin that life skills program, albeit it will be a bit smaller version than what we had hoped initially to introduce. Right now, special ed is like nailing Jell-O to the wall, because I can give you a report this week and next week, it's pretty different. But my best projections right now as to which schools would get those ed techs, based on what I know for needs, will be Morse High School, definitely. We have a very specific need for support there, and that will be one of them. The other one, again, depending on how things play out between now and the fall, would either be Dyke Newell or West Bath. Right now, I'm feeling that Woolwich probably can manage with what they have. Part of the reason that I'm, Dyke Newell and Woolwich are not quite as pressing as they were previously, is that our students coming in who are identified coming into kindergarten this year, even though the numbers are about the same, maybe a little less in some of the schools, we're seeing less need in many of our students. We don't have quite as many high-needs students. It doesn't make me comfortable to reduce those positions. I think that we still are at risk to encounter students. I've been at two meetings today and have students going in very different directions than what we anticipated for the fall. So it's not that I would like those two ed techs not to be in there, but if I have to make the choice, that's where it would go for now. Morse definitely, and either West Bath or Dyke Newell, depending on needs coming in.
Okay. Are there any questions for Sharon on the status of that budget item? No, I just, I just want to have, and I know, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I just want to have some level of confidence that the administrators in those schools feel comfortable with those choices. So I'm kind of looking to get a sense.
Hello.
Again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but this is the opportunity, if there's anything that you want to add regarding the budget, you know, I'll give you the microphone.
Better shoes next time. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. It's just as Sharon said, it's a shot in the dark, because we don't know what to expect. So do I feel comfortable? No. I would like to know that ed tech would be there if we need the ed tech. But what Sharon does is looks at the needs, and if an ed tech had to be transferred, she would do that. So we do have a lot of needs, and we never really know what they are until the kids show up. So that's my input.
All right, thank you, Sally. Okay, thank you, Sharon. So we'll move on to, or continue with the second reading of the budget. Those three items were the questions that I think were lingering from the last board meeting. Are there any further changes to the budget since we saw it last, Patrick? Nothing?
I mean, the bottom line is the same. I mean, Ruthie had to shift some, make some minor changes within it, just because of some last-minute transportation bid, for example, that came in, but the bottom line is still the same.
Okay. And I'm going to, I'm going to open it up to the board, especially since Steve wasn't here last week. I know there were three items that you had suggested we at least give some consideration to, and if I recall right, one was possibly some additional funding for professional development. Number two was money, having monies available if we decide to proceed with the bond issue. And number three was the assistant lacrosse coach, budgeting for that for next season. Is there anything that I've missed from last discussion? So those topics are on the floor, and anything else for the board? I'll open it up to you. Steve?
Well, I would make the case again for some, and I don't even think you can talk about them as additional professional development dollars. It's really replacing professional, in my mind, replacing professional development dollars that are now being concentrated to, you know, into the expeditionary learning program. I think, I think the benefit, I mean, it gives a good return on the dollar, I think. I think it shows the board commitment to... I think it shows the board commitment to improving, to improving the overall instruction in the district, and hopefully the community would see the message that way. It's not a lot of money, we're talking about $30,000, and I think it can go a long ways to show, in my mind anyways, to show the board's commitment to the district staff and to the community and to excellence in education in our issue one. If we can't restore, if we can't shoulder the $30,000, perhaps we should shoulder some portion of that $30,000, but we're not talking about a big item here.
Any response to Steve? I think we need to sort of make a decision with those of us who are at the table. Is that something that we add back in or not add back in, or do we look at a portion? Can you speak into the microphone, Bill?
What professional development remains in the budget, Patrick?
Yeah, I don't know if, Ruthie, if you can kind of summarize that piece. Bill, the high part with that one is, it might take a minute or two, because we have it in a lot of, well, several different cost centers.
Can't hear? Okay, I'm going to ask you folks, I'll look for Sally's signal. If Sally's waving, you've got to pull the microphone closer to you. So I'm going to pull this one. Alan, you've got your own. So go ahead. We're going to relook at the dollars that we currently have in the budget for professional development.
We're looking at, while we're looking at that, I would have a general comment that within the context of what we're presenting here tonight, there's growth. There are additional programs. There's a high-priority program, from my perspective, in the health position, and I feel very comfortable, first of all, that there's growth in this budget. New programs that are going to meet recognized needs in the system. So I don't disagree with you, Steve, but if it's a trade-off, if the offset for professional development funds is a needed program, I'll take the program. I know you were very hot on the life skills, and it's been pulled back into our system because of problems in other communities, and that was one thing that's back here that I feel really good about, and I'm sure you do. So that's my perspective on it. If we can do it and still grow, fine, but I want to make sure that the growth is sustained in this budget, not lost.
Right now, under staff development, in the cost center that Judy handles, we have a little over $10,000 budgeted there. We have 7,300, I think it is, under student assessment that can be used in that. But there, throughout the, all of the schools, they have their own accounts, they have a small amount, $2,000, $3,000, that each one of them can use, that it's not necessarily a district-wide account for them, you know, if they choose to send a teacher to a particular workshop, other than a district-wide event. And then we will also have Title I funds and Title II funds that will have staff development this next year, as they always do. We don't know what the figure will be yet, but usually there's a fairly good amount that we can put towards the district. Even after paying the EL contracts, there's usually a bit left over for travel and staff development.
Any questions for Ruth?
Wait, Steve? What's the aggregate amount?
Right now, I think it's, when you add up the entire budget, every staff development line comes up to around $70,000.
That includes?
It does.
Can you pass me closer to the microphone?
That includes what? I was waiting for the signal. That includes the Title I funds?
No. No, that's just in the general fund. Yeah, now, and some of that is, you know, it may, some, there may be a little bit in a maintenance account for David to get, you know, training. It's not all teacher. There may be some in the library accounts, you know, it's, it just is a lot of them coming together to add up to around 70. Some in the principals' accounts. It's not all necessarily teacher-staff development.
What do we have for teacher-staff development?
I don't, we don't break it out that way. I mean, I could get it, I guess, but I don't, I don't have it broken out.
Any other questions for Ruth? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so on the table, discussion about professional development.
You know, I'm just not. I wish I were, I don't know if Judy can address any of these questions. I'm just not convinced from the discussion that, discussions we've heard previously at meetings and in the presentations that we received early on in the budget process, that there are adequate resources to accomplish a cohesive and directed staff development effort here in the district. I appreciate what you're saying, though. I don't, I don't want to deplete program either, but at the same time, you want to sustain, you know, the excellence in the program that you established. I mean, it doesn't do us any good to continue to build on if what, if what, on the other end, you know, we have no resources to put into to maintain and to sustain the effort that hopefully the board is putting forward to, you know, create a, you know, a top-notch educational program here in the town. I don't know, can Judy?
Sure, Judy, would you please?
The difficulty in not having the Title II funds is that we can access those for district-wide initiatives, whereas the budgets within the buildings are typically used for building-based things. Myself and a couple of principals and a couple of teachers were at a workshop today on sort of proficiency-based learning and all of that involved in that, and it's a complete and total shift for us. You know, in four years, we're going to be, this freshman class coming up, they're going to have a standards-based diploma where students have to meet certain standards in order to graduate. It's, it is very different from what it is. So that's my concern, is that we're in a time of real change, and in order to get ourselves all up to speed, teachers and administrators, we're really going to need to put some money toward that effort. And, you know, I just, you know, and again, I don't want to take anything away from expeditionary learning. I want that too. I think that's a very valuable thing for the district. But of course, I do wish it would be, you know, the, where you fund it could be shifted or add some extra money into, you know, $10,000 isn't going to go very far in my district-wide budget. We would like to send, SET 75 is offering, they're bringing in the Teachers College of New York this summer to do some very specific writing work, which is something that we've been working on this year. Before, before we had the budget freeze and all, they asked if we would like some slots, and I said I would love 10 slots. Well, right there, that's $3,500. You know, I don't, I don't dare commit that with my current $10,000, you know, because I'll have nothing left for the, during the year. So, you know, there are wonderful opportunities out there, and we, I really want to have a focus, I want to have a staff development plan. We've been talking about that on the administrative team, so that the money would not, would be very focused and get us to where we need to go, but, you know, that's.
There any questions for Judy? And Judy Harvey is our assistant superintendent. I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay.
What's a dollar figure that would be workable? I mean, we've kind of, at one point, it targeted $30,000. What's a number that gives you something to work with that isn't $30,000?
Well, even if you added another 10, and I think we could, you know, that would be really helpful to us. But we'll make use of whatever portion of that you can put toward professional development. We'll definitely make use of that, and we'll make good use of it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Judy.
Sure.
Any other discussion about dollars for professional development? All right, why don't we do this? We've got, let's move this off, we'll discuss this, let's begin, let's start with the lacrosse assistant. Any feelings on that position, whether or not we should add that or not add that to the budget?
Stipend, $2,000 something.
So we're looking at around $2,000 for an assistant coach for the lacrosse, boys lacrosse team. $23, 27 is the amount. Bill, can you take the microphone? Thank you.
As I understand it, that's in direct reaction to the fact that that program is very heavily subscribed, and there are too many athletes for one person to instruct.
The status right now is that team is about 40 students who participate, and they currently have one paid coach.
Here comes Scott.
Scott Walker, our athletic director.
Just to give you some background, for the last three years, four years including this year, we've been on a steady rise of participants in boys lacrosse, peaking at 45 student athletes last year. And that's really, we capped it at that level, we just can't have any more as far as uniforms go, et cetera, with one paid coach to handle 45 students. Now, that coach has been maintaining a varsity and junior varsity practice schedule. They practice together, as well as a varsity and junior varsity game schedule. So that means one coach, and the difficulty is, from a safety standpoint, it is a collision contact sport, and for drills purposes, for game purposes, it's very, very helpful to have an additional set of eyes present for those events.
Any questions for Scott on the need for that, other than what he's described?
I think that's a very cheap price compared to what it could be if something happened.
Do you agree?
I agree fully, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. So we would like to add back, or add to, not add back, an assistant lacrosse coach to this budget. All right, that brings us to the money necessary to go through the bond process if we decide to go that route. And you had some information shared with me prior. Do you want to talk more in detail about that, Patrick?
Yeah, we just got this recently from someone that we consult with, and, you know, these are just estimates for the costs, legal fees, processing fees to go out to bond, the whole process, is if we go out to bond up to $5 million, we're talking around the high $30,000 range. If we go out to bond between $5 and $10 million, we're talking low $40 range, and, you know, above that is anywhere from mid-40s to $60,000. So the board had talked about putting a certain amount of money into this budget in preparation for going out to bond for some of our technology needs, possibly food service, but mainly facilities needs at Morse, but also possibly at some of our other facilities in the district that are certainly needed. You know, these fees can be paid and can be melded in to the amount that we go out and ask for, so that is an option as well, according to our consultant.
So similar to financing closing costs?
Right, yeah. So that is a.
You can finance that instead of having a cash on hand. Okay, Bill?
Dave's writing a book. He's going to publisher at the end of the evening.
No, if it can be folded into the ultimate bond request, I'd like to see it done in that manner, and that way we're not encompassing funds that we could use elsewhere.
Okay. Any other feelings, discussion on assessing dollars towards the bond project?
Gives us some money for professional development.
Okay, so with the bond money, do the members of the board feel confident, feel comfortable in what Patrick just presented to us, that if we do go ahead with the process, that we could finance those costs?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we will not be budgeting any money for the bond process? Okay, so that brings us back to professional development. Steve has not necessarily made a motion, but proposed looking at an additional $30,000. Any further discussion on that item?
I would just like to say that professional training can take place two or three different ways. You've got skilled people in your own staff that can do a lot of this. That gives you your biggest bang for your buck. You can bring in outside people, or you can send somebody outside. That costs more, less people are involved, sometimes it's not a carryover. The school district at one time was noted for its internal professional training. They had schools coming from other places to come here to get trained. I would like to see us get back to that point, instead of sending our dollars out to so-called specialists who may or may not know what they're talking about.
And I think that's a good point. I know that that was something that Judy had talked about in discussing professional development, that we were going to move more towards that model. At the same time, even the folks internally, if there's work that's done during the summer or done after school, folks need to be compensated for that. So is there perhaps a reduced number that you would feel comfortable with, Alan, other than the $30,000?
I would take it at half at least, no more than 20.
So $15,000? Steve?
No, I think, well, I would like to see 30, but I think 15 gives Judy an opportunity to build a base and hopefully look at next year's budget and maybe restore it higher level.
I think they could pool together their resources and get a bigger bang for their buck.
If we do it internally?
Yeah.
Yep. Bill?
Yeah, I was going to recommend 10, because Judy said that she could get by with 10. 15's not going to break the bank. That's fine.
Okay.
Steve, next year.
All right, so I think amongst the board present, we have some level of consensus of $15,000 to add back for professional development. Are there any other items that we need to discuss regarding this budget before we vote to approve it? Patrick, is there anything that you would like to add? Steve?
Just before you move away, on the bond cost issue, what's been discussed up to this point is the cost of finding. up to this point is the cost of finance, or the preparation of the bond package to go out. Is there, might there be additional costs necessary to put together the technical information on, on what, you know, if, for example, we go out with a, of facilities bombed of some nature? Do we have the resources to do the necessary engineering work and study to support the technical aspects of the bond?
Patrick?
Yeah, I believe that some of that is included in this piece of looking at bond council, but also some of the other logistical items that have to be done when going out for a bond. Again, it would have to go through the process of, if we're not going to put it into the budget, then it would be part of that bond, part of financing the bond.
Right. No, I understand that, but we're not, by taking, and I agree, I mean typically you would, I think, put a bond out, and you would use the bond proceeds in part to support the financing costs, the legal costs associated, so I think that's an appropriate way to go with it. But I'm wondering whether, for example, we have the Harriman report now, right?
That's completed?
Has, the Harriman report's been completed. Is that going to be sufficient to support a, a potential bond request, or request for, you know, funding in the community, from the community? Or do we need additional funds for other studies at this point?
You know, I don't know if I know the complete answer to that. Ruthie might be able to comment. I mean, anything, anytime you're going out for facilities, there, I mean, additional money is certainly going to be helpful, let it be if you're advertising, if you're trying to show the public different options, getting some more feedback from Harriman or some other PDT architects about certain things that we learn. So I think we've got to start with the Harriman Elementary Report, as well as the Morse one that will hopefully be final by the end of this week, but we certainly could use more data, and, which would cost more money.
Oftentimes, what districts will do too is go out for a bond anticipation note. Once you've decided that you are going to bond a project, you borrow the money in anticipation of that bond issue for those things, that, you know, you can't do a study and pay for it later on, they want their money at the time that they're doing the study, so that's what the bond anticipation note does. And you pay that off with your bond.
Any other questions for Ruth on that while she's up here? Okay, thank you, Ruth. All right, before we vote on the budget, I will, we didn't indicate a public comment session, but I will open this up for public comment. So if there is anybody who would like to address, or has questions about the budget, just please come up, state your name, and where you're from, or if, something like that. So the microphone is open.
Hi, my name is Kate Carpenter. I'm, have an eight-year-old in second grade at Dyke Newell Elementary, and an 18-month-old upcoming. And I also volunteer over at Dyke Newell in the computer lab, running an after-school math club on Tuesdays over there. And I just have a question for Dean. The iPads, are they going to have external keyboards as part of the package for the students?
It's not a ratio, one keyboard every cell places.
Okay, so that's not included in the budget, that every student can be able to have a lap placement of a keyboard?
All the schools that we visited who purchased keyboards say that no one ever signs them up, that after they dry it out, they're totally mixed, or they stop using keyboards, or type them out. We visited several schools, but there will be some available keyboards.
Okay. I mean, my only issue there is, I also train adults, I think you probably know, we've heard just computer, I also train adults to use keyboards, and I have to go through this process of giving them an, talking with them about ergonomic setup, and that lap placement of the keyboard, if you want to encourage people to be doing touch typing 65 words a minute or so, once they get into the high school level, that becomes really hard, and it's probably something that they won't recognize right away. So it's, if I can just maybe encourage looking at external keyboards, I know it adds significantly to the cost, but it's something that down the road, if you want them to do a lot of production, might come into play.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Any questions, comments regarding the budget?
I just have a question...
What you need, Lorna?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know me.
Thank you.
Lorna Ryan from Woolwich. I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about the professional development, and if the conversation is better for another day, that's fine. I, the thing that troubles me a little bit as a community member, is I remember back in the early part of the budget process, I do remember Judy coming in and giving us all a presentation and finance committee on the needs for the department, and in particular professional development. And I too remember kind of a go-get-'em attitude on internal resources. And so, looking at now increasing or putting more money back into the budget, while I certainly am not against professional development whatsoever, given the way things have been, and given that we're already looking at an increase, I just really want to be able to be sure that I can articulate maybe to other parents, or even for myself, what is that development? Twice it's been mentioned, we get a return on the dollar, we get a bang for our buck. Well, what is that? How do we measure that? On student assessments, you know, it seems like, I'm just getting started with this, but there's all these student assessments and expectations of students, and then they do the assessments, kneecap, or whatever it might be. And then ultimately, there's argument over whether those are credible, whether that is holding a school to the correct standard, so I want to be really careful that, if we're going to spend money on it, which I completely support on one level, what are we getting? And so could we possibly look at, maybe for next fund year, I don't want to say create a focus group, but get together, have a brainstorming session on exactly where our needs are, what kind of training, how many people, how are we going to use it, and most importantly, how are we going to measure it? Because if it can't be measured, and if it's going to get politicized, and people are going to argue about the standards anyway, is that helping the teachers, and is that helping the students? So those are just my two cents on that. And then Dean, I, Dean, you're there. I just have a quick question. My five and eight-year-old, first of all, I'm excited about the Mac, and my five and eight-year-old are very proficient on Apple TV, iPhone, iMac, but they're also equally proficient at gaming, if you don't watch it, getting online, and all that. So I'm assuming there would be, we have that under control as best we can as well. And then I have found, even in my own professional stuff, saving PDFs on my iMac are a little troublesome. I figured out how to do it by Googling it. But just making sure, when I hear from teachers that maybe keyboards are a problem, or writing is a problem, just making sure, you already mentioned there's applications that might be suited for that, just making sure we keep up on that. But I'm excited about it, I think, I've seen the Apple TV at use in the classroom, it's really, really neat. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Dean, if you wouldn't mind coming up and addressing the gaming question?
Like any computing device, they're capable of running games, and there's really no substitute for the teachers to have the skills that they need, and the time that they need to be able to manage the classroom. There are tools that we try to use to help, but there is no substitute for being up and walking around the room. We can't filter all applications that someone might want to launch, but I don't see that, I mean, the iPad is no more of a gaming device than the MacBook that we currently use. I mean, I think, any teacher will tell you, it's a, it's a constant struggle to keep kids on task all the time with any computing device. So what we need to do is establish norms, rules, hold people to them, and, you know, create a culture where the device is used for educational purposes.
And not to mention all the other personal devices that they bring into the classroom.
Absolutely.
Okay. Judy, would you mind addressing the professional development question?
Sure, there was a lot there, so if I forget something. There are, made, two main things that I feel like we need over the next year. We need to continue our writing work, and a lot of that can be done in-house, with our, you know, in-house experts. It always does bring things to another level when you have either area teachers coming in, which we've had a couple of times this year, a teacher from Brunswick who is, who uses the writing project that I mentioned, SAT 75. We've brought a couple of those people in, and it really, you know, teachers learn from their peers outside the district, as well as in the district, and that's very, very valuable. The bigger piece that I think we may need some outside help with is the proficiency-based diploma that's coming in four years. We are, we're just really not even a quarter of the way there. And I think the more that we go to these workshops and see, I mean, there were, the workshop today, there were close to 300 people there, superintendents, assistant superintendents, teachers, the whole gamut, principals. And, you know, I think it's a wake-up call for everybody, just what we're going to be expected, and this is law. This is not, it's not a choice about standards-based education, this is in law. So in four years, kids are going to be graduating with proficiencies, rather than, you know, you're not going to be able to push kids through if they don't meet the standards anymore. Very, very different way of teaching and learning, and we've all got to become learners in that form. So, you know, there are, we brought some people in from Great Schools Partnership, just to talk to us about what professional development might look like for the high school in particular, around some proficiency-based work, and they offer some coaching services, you know, we have a new principal coming in. You know, I think that support would be wonderful if we could afford it, and, you know, having this, having $15,000 would really, because it, you know, it's going to cost us that for the high school. So I think it's a combination of things. It's the summer work that somebody mentioned. I had Eric Varney from the high school approach me about having a couple days this summer for the middle and high school science faculties to get together, because the science people have a new set of standards, just out like two weeks ago. You know, it's overwhelming, the work that we are faced with right now, and while we can do a lot of it with in-house expertise, I think we're also realizing that we may need some support. As far as the testing goes, you know, the kneecaps are, that's not a choice for us, and, you know, it's, it's the NWEA that we have a choice, and we've actually been talking about that, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sally, come on up.
This may or may not be...
Sally Brown?
Oh, Sally Brown, Principal of Dyke Newell.
Principal of Dyke Newell.
Yes, thanks. One of the things I wanted to say about professional development that hasn't been mentioned, and that is, yes, our mission at Dyke Newell is to teach kids how to read, because we know if they don't learn to read early, they're in for a tough struggle. And it is the most important staff development, when you have your own staff work with the teachers. But I do want to make a point, that I've had several teachers from my school spend thousands of dollars to go off to conferences to learn how to teach reading and writing better, and come back, and share what they've learned with the staff. So they're taking the money out of their own, and this is not just one person, they've flown across the country to week-long conferences in the summertime, spending their own money, and I, I think that needs to be recognized, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the budget? So this is an action item, I'll need a motion. Do you have anything drafted, or we just, okay?
I think so. Yeah. Well, let me, let me know if I'm on solid ground.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion that the budget, which is the proposed 13-14 budget as presented here this evening, be approved with the addition of $15,000 in professional development, and I believe it was $2,350 for an assistant boys lacrosse coach. Those are the two additional items, right?
That's correct.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion by Bill, seconded by Alan. Okay, just for the record, I'd just like to make an amendment to that motion, that it include the bottom line figure of $27,748,714, with an increase to local contribution So, I guess I've made the amendment. Are you fine with that amendment, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll add you on the additional caution.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the budget with the amended figures. Is there any further discussion from the board? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. None opposed? Okay, that passes. Before we move on, we need to, next item of business is, we just need to sign the warrants for the district budget meeting, but for those folks that are still here, just a couple of dates. The district budget meeting, which is the town hall style meeting, where we vote the different portions of the budget up line by line, is the way that they're given to us by the state. That meeting is on the 28th of May, that's at 6 o'clock, and that's here at Bath Middle School. It's important that if you are a citizen within the RSU community, that you show up to that meeting to either vote the budget up, or vote the budget down. The referendum, which is the second part of the validation process, is held on, is going to be the 4th of June, and that will be at your regular polling place. So, we will move on to item 6.0, signing of the warrants for the district budget meeting and referendum vote. I see here that is an action item. What is the motion that we need?
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay, so no motion, we will just sign those. If the board members who are present can stay, we'll sign those after the meeting. If there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by David, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.